Call the city commission meeting. The city of Caravelle.
Call me.
Heather, would you give it to the new location?
Father and in the name of Jesus, we gather here to beg, Lord, to discuss business concerning the citizens of Caravelle. We thank you for the opportunity we have, heaven and father. And we pray that the Holy Spirit will guide each one of us in to make the decisions that would be best for the people here in this city. We love you, we thank you for the opportunity we have, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I declare the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes?
How much is to approve the minutes?
We have a motion on the floor. Second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Public comment?
Hi, my name is Deborah Fany. Most of you know me as Debbie Jordan, a local musician in the area. I would just like to remind everybody with the upcoming election, please help yourself out, be informed, not only listen to the word of mouth of your fellow Caravelians, but also do your research. Just do your research and check and see who's doing what for this city and this community and just be informed and let's make this a good vote up until September. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. Commission report?
I have none.
Guess what? For the first time in four years, I'm gonna say for the sales speeding up since we're full, I have none. But y'all know I've done all of my legal stuff that I generally do.
Commissioner Massing?
No, everything I was gonna talk about was gonna pass on without items on me.
Commissioner Button?
Thank you. I'll review as well. On the Welcome Park in the Triangle area, that project is substantially complete. We had a punchless item that we reviewed today. It appears that they have met all those items, so we'll move to complete that project. On the Avenue B resurfacing, now that the Welcome Park work is done, we have authorized the contractor to proceed with that work. He is able to mobilize within three weeks. Also head with the citizens today, Mr. Jackson owns in specific drainage UCUC has in that area, so we'll try to incorporate those along that project. The 12th Street sidewalk connector project, they have requested substantial completion, so we will review that. There may or may not be punchless signs, but that project is moving towards completion. We have a few other projects that we're working on for the CRA. And finally, we reviewed Picasland subdivision for primary flat group. That item is on the agenda, so we'll reserve comment for that agenda.
Partnership?
Good evening, everybody. This is a very brief report tonight, and also there's no written report. I'm having technical difficulties at the museum. I did want to tell you that the entire grant that we've been managing for the city for the second phase of refurbishing for City Old City Hall has been totally completed. We've got the final sign off by all the parties, and as soon as Miranda is able to, as soon as the company, the contractor catches their check, we will have proof that we paid it and we'll have that all turned in by the deadline on the 15th. We also were informed this week that the presentation to defend Phase Three of the renovation of that building, which is putting in an outside stair egress so that we can renovate the upstairs, is coming up to be considered by the Grants Committee of the State on the 2nd of September. So we're moving along with that. And there is some controversy in the lines about whether it should be wood or galvanized steel, and the contractor and the architect are recommending galvanized steel because even though it's more expensive, it is, it's gonna last as long as the building does. And as long as it's out there under that tree where everything rots that's made out of pressurized wood, it's probably gonna be a problem. So they recommended that and we have gone along with that. And the other things I wanted to tell you is that the museum is also sponsoring another Saturday workshop at the senior center, or like a speaking event, where we're gonna talk about 300 years of the early Caravelle history back when the Spanish came up, which is gonna cover 300 years in a couple of hours. And we've got some great speakers, and there's a nice ad about that in this month's Coastline newspaper. And we really recommend it. It could be another outstanding, we've got some incredible speakers, especially one man who specializes in antique weapons and guns and the creation of those kinds of things, which were all part of life here during those years. And then the other thing is on the very front page of the Coastline, there is a picture of all of you, many of you, standing at the new fish display. And that was another one of our partially responsible for that accomplishment. And we're very proud of it and appreciate the fact that we got that done to improve the things for tourists to look at now with the work. And I did leave on your desk for you a updated version of a fact sheet on the beach that we put out a year ago. And I just updated a couple of things on it that have happened since then, and I'll let you copy the air for your consideration. And that's all I have to report to you. Thank you.
Thank you. EBC? Nothing. Attorney report?
I have none.
Mayor, I have something.
Go ahead.
I've just got some upcoming meetings that I wanted to announce to the public. I'd like to, on the August the 20th at 5:00, have a budget workshop.
At 5:01?
5:00. And that one's not mandated by the state. Now, the next one on September 10th will be our preliminary first budget hearing, which will be at 5:01.
Excuse me, if we, at the workshop, it seems like we need a second workshop. Can we schedule it at 4:00?
We can.
Okay. Thank you so much.
August 20th will be a workshop. September 10th is the first budget hearing at 5:01. September 17th will be our swearing in. It'll be a special meeting at 5:00, all the newly elected commissioners. And September 24th at 5:01 will be our final budget hearing. Those are all Thursdays.
Are you gonna publish that somewhere?
The first, the budget workshop will be an ad. The budget hearing will come out, the notice is on your trim notice when you get it from the property ariser. And then the final budget hearing, it's all state mandated. I've got something.
Mayor, I have one other question. Then, what about our CRA budget workshop?
Those would be included together.
Oh, we're gonna have the CRA general find out orders.
It'll all be.
Okay.
Now, we have a CRA meeting on the 18th. We can have a mini workshop after that, before the 20th, to kind of speed that one along.
Because we're not used to having a CRA. And I know that we have a hearings preliminary and final, all three budgets are approved at the same time.
Correct.
And our CRA meeting now are at 1:30, right?
1:30.
All right.
And that's the third Tuesday.
Public hearing on the first reading of ordinance 462.
I'll read this one. Ordinance 462, an ordinance of the city of Caravelle, Florida, providing for amendment of ordinance 282 pertaining to occupancy and use of travel trailers, motor homes, recreational vehicles, and open campers in the city of Caravelle, providing for separability, providing for treatment in event of conflict, laws, and providing for effective date. This is first reading on basically the travel trailer ordinance that we have spent much time. So there is no, there is no action.
And I mean, didn't you say that I can make a motion just to do away with this ordinance altogether?
You can. Certainly we can. We can take input today, but no action is required. I was asked by Commissioner Massing, just that, that question is, again, we've been over this grant a lot, but certainly the commission can weigh in on this.
I have a question on this ordinance. The ordinance, I asked Keisha and she emailed it to me for this ordinance change. What she gave to me or said to me is different than what was approved in the June 5th meeting. The June 5th meeting, and I went back and verified that through the YouTube video of the meeting, it says section one, number C, we added the definition for premises at 50 minutes and 10 seconds. And that is not on the ordinance that was handed out, the proposal.
Okay, I'm sorry, section?
Section one, C. This is what was handed out at that meeting in June, and this is what was approved.
We did, we did discuss premises. I know because I did request that one.
And that's not on the proposal. Also on section two, number one, on this proposal that Keisha sent me, and it has a date on here of March the 1st, but you said that we were gonna change that date to January 1st, and that's incorrect.
Which one, where at?
Section two exemption one.
Where, on the first line?
Bottom line. That says March the 1st, but they said in that meeting in June that we were gonna change that date, and I looked on the YouTube video.
I changed the first one up there, and that's just a typo. If you see, it was highlighted up on the first line, so that just didn't always change.
And the third unit was section two exemption number five is not on this proposal that you have here presented to us. That proposal was one unit per lot, and that's not on here. And that was on, I went on the video, that was at 53 minutes and 57 seconds.
I'm sorry, Beth, you're referring to section two? Some of these numbers and letters aren't matching up. We may have a print off difference. Because whatever we approved on June 5th is what June 5th.
And this is where it was. This is wrong.
I have, I have one that was printed out.
Yeah.
From June the 4th.
This is the last one.
This is the last one.
This is June the 5th. This is the last one.
This is the last one.
Well, obviously, if we need to, it is the June 5th version.
We've got somebody for a chance at least. Now, this one I just picked up out front. Right, and that's the one I printed off, because that's the one that looks like the most recent, but it does, she's talking about here, it doesn't have premises. This is the one we worked on on June the 4th.
Right, June 4th, okay. So this is where the, and.
The latest one I had is that one. The Chose.
This is the reason I see.
And we have one month, two more months to be on this video. It's awful, but, and a lot of people have worked on this, but we.
Okay, yeah, I just printed off the wrong one.
So Fany, can I make the motion to still let this ordinance now or if you make the motion?
You can make, you can make such a movement now.
Okay. You do it. You do it. Relax. Relax. Can I make that motion now, and then if it's bad, it's bad, and then you'll have to, you'll have to solve it?
Yes, if you can.
Okay, I make the motion to do away with ordinance 462 altogether.
I'm sorry.
So I think that accomplished is hard for our leaders.
Maybe have discussions.
We'll discuss it for 10 minutes.
Yeah. I would just like to know, then, would it, do we revert back to the, what about the ordinance 282?
Obviously, this is a, even though Commissioner Massing had mentioned this to me, I did not, I did not prepare a legal opinion on where it goes from. I think the commission would to say, you know what, let's not proceed with ordinance 462. Then what happened? We would then still have ordinance 282 on the books. It has historically been interpreted, as we've discussed now for months and months and months. The commission has directed staff, it's kind of clarified how it can be applied, and Commissioner Williams down there, Williams has indicated, his understanding of it when it was adopted and that sort of thing. We would be certainly left with ordinance 282 applying it. If the objective, well, I guess, I don't know, Commissioner Massing in the spot, but is the goal to, to basically get rid of ordinance 462, which is one draft that they kind of...
Yeah, but nobody has the same one up. Ms. Barber's isn't the same as ours, or y'all's, or whatever.
Right, right.
I'll read it.
But if we get rid of that, and we revert, or we just still have on the books ordinance 282, and we can obviously get some clarification, which we've already gotten, on how to interpret it, how to apply it, and move forward, or is the idea to simply get rid of the regulation of travel trailers? Is that, yeah? I mean, I'm not too, I'm, I'm.
Yeah. Now, the county is still, it was this same issue we brought forward to the county. And they addressed it somewhat, but they continued with this ordinance 282, which is exactly the exact same ordinance as this ordinance. I don't have a copy of it, but they're continuing with that ordinance at this point.
Right, they just dropped and changed.
Any change, they didn't, yeah, they didn't make a change. And the only thing different on a county's ordinance like this one is it says Franklin County, and this one says Caravelle, City of Caravelle.
They do have a size of the residence, the house or whatever, that have a square footage, which you have to go back. They do have that, because some people had a camper, and to stand within the law, they build a, add an addition on to the, the camper, and they did it. So I know that happened in several cases.
Yeah, they just kept this ordinance as well as the song. They didn't make any changes to the old ordinance.
If you do away with this ordinance, excuse me, if you do away with this ordinance and you go back to the ordinance that you had to begin with, that still doesn't address the issue that, of the campers in, or in the area now.
This is, what, obviously, there, there would, this issue wouldn't be completely gone, if the idea is, of course, the commission can decide not to proceed with the adoption of ordinance 462. That's, that's, we can just, we can stop it here today, if that's what y'all want to do. At a subsequent meeting, it probably would be helpful to have the issue of ordinance 282 come up on the morning, and have the commission tell staff, hey, this is how we want this thing applied, whether it be enforcement, or whether it be, that sort of thing. Because what we've done so far during this interim period is we have the moratorium on just all forms of travel trailer that go on lots in the city. And again, some of the more recent interpretations of ordinance 282, that would continue, I mean, the stricter interpretation, more recent interpretation is, that in most circumstances, travel trailers should not be standalone on single bed of lot in the city. So, but, but that would be something that, again, the interpretation has changed over the, since it was adopted back in the 2002 contract. So, just, it wouldn't completely be over, we would still need some guidance, but it could be a need.
Well, I agree, it has taken quite some time going through the and the back and forth, and we should have read on this last month, but it was, it should have been published in a newspaper like it should have been in time, or we would have been a month ahead on it. But I do want to say that members of the public, and the P and Z, and the city commission, and the city attorney, we've all worked on this 462 ordinance. It's good, it doesn't change the core of the original 282 ordinance. All the people that have campers stored in their yards can still keep campers stored in their yard, and they can use it for equipment and office storage, just like, you know, this one, this one adopts this original ordinance here as best I can tell. And then it just allows for the, and the one campers, the campers that about 15 or so, property owners that have, could the single campers on their lots without a household, it allows for them to continue, but it then, it puts a deadline where no more can continue, which is in keeping with this original ordinance. But as far as people coming and staying and a camper 14 days on your lot, where your house is, like to come and visit, which they've always been able to do with this original ordinance, they still can do that. And, you know, it really doesn't change that much of the original ordinance as best I can tell. It just addresses the one issue that was brought up.
Well, I think we ought to move on with the new ordinance. If we have to correct something, we have to correct it. As far as the time put in, we're gonna be here anyway, we're gonna put in time. I have no problem with that, because we cannot be here. But as far as going away with it, I'm not necessarily in favor of that. But it's time, I think, for a vote.
Now, there is one issue that the...
But it needs to be, it needs to be corrected.
This wasn't presented to the public.
Yes, yes.
This was not, I mean, the correct one wasn't presented to the public.
All this is, all that's going on here is, the caption is correct, Keisha's printed off the wrong copy. Whether it's I sent her the wrong copy, or she printed off the wrong, we revised it four or five times. So, I understand there's a little confusion, but the ordinance is what it is. It's what we passed on June 5, or what we agreed on June 4, and the caption has not changed. So obviously, if, and we can print off the copy right now, if anybody asks questions as to what's going over on June 4, but that will not stop first reading that.
Okay, we've had the first reading. We now have first reading, and she made a motion. She got a second.
Okay.
I'm gonna call for the vote. All right, we have a motion to do away with ordinance 462, 462. All in, all in.
Because I'll say something. We've got people hanging out on the land here. We, we can make some decisions on where the public.
Well, you've got it right there. We've got a first reading.
Could that suit you people, this, this come up?
Okay, now wait, now, we grandfathered you in, and all of that, now you've got something else?
No. Can we ask one question? On, on this ordinance, will they be able to sell the land and have RVs?
Yes.
So they will be able to always break the ordinance forever?
Yes, on that.
It will never revert back?
That's the way I understand it.
It will never revert back to the way it's supposed to be?
No, unless their usage stops.
Yes.
But that will, that will never happen, because there's nobody to see if they don't have it there for you.
I understand.
So, to me, that's not an option, really. I mean, we have places for RVs.
Yes.
Yes, they're more expensive than what they paid.
Yes.
That's why they didn't go there, to buy them. But these were not made for RVs. So I think that they, yes, they can keep them there, but when they sell them, they need to revert back to what it was supposed to be for.
They want to be able to sell it the way the rest of them have been. Now, we more or less agree with what happens, and we're letting them do it. Now, there seems to be something else.
They're breaking our ordinance.
I understand. It's not.
Our ordinance, if we went to their town and we break their ordinance, they wouldn't like it either.
I understand, completely. I didn't say I don't store it. I just said, I understand, but that's what we did.
It's just not right. We have ordinances for a reason, and that's all I'm saying. I thought we'd jump on this ordinance. Yeah, we'll play this ordinance, Ms. Barber. I never agreed to, I know. I always argued against the continuation perpetuity. I didn't like that. It's not right.
I, we understand. We, they understand.
I'm not for that. I aspire not to be.
David?
First, has the reading of the ordinance that was being questioned, has that been finalized before we went to the...
It's just a reading.
Yeah, it's just a reading.
So there's nothing? No, there's no vote.
There's no, there's no action in the ordinance.
And as I understand it, that would have, that would have brought clarity to the, to the mixed use situation that we're in, and it would handle going forward with more clarity of defining premises.
Yeah, just, the purpose of this ordinance is to clarify the ordinance, to provide for how we're gonna treat folks that are currently out there, as well as how we're dealing with this moving forward.
So what you read and what the first speaker said doesn't match what was said in public in the last meeting, this, this, what you read will have to be redone, correct?
No.
Unless we do it all together.
This is the way it works, is when you advertise an ordinance, you advertise it by caption. We just, we did that, we just, you just read the caption at the meeting. The snap to here, and thank you, Ms. Barber, for pointing it out, is that Keisha printed off an old copy, one of the old, rev, old versions of the ordinance, but it is the June 5th version, June 4th version, that, that this reading, this first reading is on. So unless there are material changes up to that, we're on for second reading in September. If there are material changes, then it needs to be re-noticed, re-advertised, re-first reading.
So then, now the motion, the second, that's on the floor, is to just do away with, with what we just put together and what?
Do away with that, don't you? Now, the, the one that was handed out here, that I just started off the panel and talked, it does not, it does not discuss the successors and the signs, so that could be maybe where there was confusion and a reason.
And it would handle going forward with more clarity of, of defining premises.
Yeah, just, just, okay. The purpose of this ordinance is to clarify the ordinance, to provide for how we're going to treat folks that are currently out there, as well as how we're dealing with this moving forward.
Okay, so, so what you read and what the first speaker said doesn't match what was said in public at the last meeting, this, this, what you read will have to be redone, correct?
No.
Unless we do away with it altogether.
This is, this is the way it works, is when you advertise an ordinance, you advertise it by caption. We just, we did that. We just, you just read the caption at the meeting. The snap to here, and thank you, Ms. Barbara, for pointing it out, is that Keisha printed off an old copy, one of the old, the old versions of the ordinance. But it is the June 5th version, June 4th version that, that this reading, this first reading is on. So unless there are material changes up to that, we're on for second reading in September. If there are material changes and needs to be re-noticed, re-advertised, re-first reading.
So then, now the motion, the second, that's on the floor, is to just do away with, with what we just put together and what...
Now, the, the one that was handed out here, that I just started off the panel and talked, it does not, it, it does not discuss the successors and the signs. So that could be maybe where there was confusion and a reason to do away with it.
My bad.
Uh, to do away with the ordinance 462. I mean, there could have been some confusion there, uh, since the, from the earlier one.
Nobody wants ordinance 462. Y'all don't want it either.
No, but, but I understand, but, Ms. Madison, I understand the, the consequences of stating. We have non-conforming, uh, housing currently. And it's this commission's obligation to enforce its ordinance. So if you do away with the change, you go back to 282, and all of these people here got permits for doing what they did, but they did something that's not allowed by your LDRs. So the question with me is, if we do away with this, how are we going to deal with the other?
All the work that we've done to protect these particular property owners and, and the work that, uh, you know, that they, they bought that property and...
They're in 462, or they don't in 462.
But these property owners are...
Yeah, you want it to read the way you want it to read.
Well, well, welcome to the call, kids. Nobody's happy at the end of the day when you, when you make this, but everybody, but everybody can hopefully live with some portion of it. I would just like to, I would just like to, to bring this up and Mr. Hartman can clarify maybe. But when you go to getting a mortgage and you have a home in a R1 residential, and if you, um, if you, or if you're going to go out and get an appraisal, when they come in and say mixed use, you've automatically now got some marks against you. If, if you're in a subdivision and you're going to get a mortgage on a home, you can get a Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, but it has to be conformal. But if you have that same home in an area with mixed use, you can't even qualify for certain mortgages. And the same thing with the appraisals. If you're getting, if you build, overbuild a house in an area where it's mixed use, they can't appraisal as high for that house, which you then base a mortgage on, based upon the appraisal.
So we're saying that the mixed use devalues the amount of property.
Today and in the future. So, but here's the catch. If, if we pass this and there are exceptions made, then maybe you get a footnote in the appraisal saying that it's not mixed use, there was variances or exceptions made, but this is an R1 and only...
They didn't want to use the word exception. They wanted to use the word redemption. I argued that.
Well, my, my only point is, is checking with people who do appraisals and mortgages, whatever we do here, from economic standpoint, we should make sure that there are not unintended consequences of how you, if you eliminated this and left it the way it is. Um, if the way that you approve it and the words you put in the resolution...
Are you happy with the new ordinance?
I'm not going to say I'm happy. There's some differences in there. But what I want to be clarified, the lady that just stepped up there, I don't know if she's been to every meeting, said that we didn't want to build an RV park because it was too expensive, so we did what we did. She don't know what you're talking about. We come down here and ask.
Now, we've been through these meetings.
I don't know. She ain't been all of them because she would have made that comment if she did. She said, we don't want to pay to put them in an RV park, so we decided to come over and set them up on a lot. We bought that property. And I stated, everybody in here that's with us, stated what we were going to do. We asked for permission. We got it. We paid for it. We did it. And that's crack. I'd be proud to hear that.
I'm trying to cut this thing short and get down to the mini grid of whether we're going to pass it or not.
Yes, it's already been, let the vote go through. Then we'll decide whether you're going to pass it or not. But right now, you're going to vote your...
No, no, no. I'm just saying, if you're satisfied, if you're not satisfied, it's going to be...
I think you had a motion and a second. You need to have a vote.
I, I, I just want to say one, one more thing now. This, this ordinance, 462, protects, it protects you. It protects these individual property owners at this point. That's why it took so long. That's why we have worked, we have worked for compromise. And, and Ms. Keisha's just come out with a, a, a printout hot off the press, if they, they want to take a look at it. And if we go back to 282, we'll, we'll go back to the drawing board. Is that correct, Mayor?
Very much so.
Okay.
She's going to read that one.
But let me ask the mayor. Can I read this? Would you like to read this part, this part right here? Okay. It's partial, uh, it's in section two, of partial owners upon which travel trailers were located as of January 1st, 2015, and said use is evaluated and determined to be a conforming use.
January 1st, when?
Um, section two, another one. Ms. Keisha just printed that.
Fifteen? No.
As of 2015, or before?
As of January 1st, 2015, were located.
Okay.
And said use is evaluated and determined to be a conforming use prior to January 1st, 2015, shall be exempt and considered conforming uses as long as the use of the parcel by the owner that limited to one per lot, and y'all agreed to that in the meeting. And any successor or assigned remains consistent with the provisions of ordinance 282 as applied by the city prior to January 1st, 2015. Now, can you explain that now? It better for us, Mr. Hartman, than you. Explain that reason. Certainly, private question.
In my understanding, in the simple terms, the process was to protect both property owners, the value of the issues raised by Ms. Barbara, as far as single-family, stick-built homeowners, as well as balance it with protection of the folks that were permitted to put those travel trailers in there before January 1, 2015. I mean, that was the point of 46, was to balance that. Not everybody's going to be happy, but...
It's a, it's a delicate compromise.
Just a balance.
A compromise. And, and it may not be right necessarily, but we, we did, I mean, it, it protects these property owners, but as far as zoning and our land evaluation regulations, uh, it's not, you know, correct necessarily, but it does protect these folks that have come here and, and, um, improved their property as they were told this to.
I have just a quick question. And there is a plan being settled here. They're still going to be allowed to do a non-conforming use.
Okay.
Perpetuity?
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity, that's it. Can the rest of us do non-conforming things with our property? And if not, why not?
This, this, this ordinance does not, we removed the non-conforming, the, the, called the special exception, non-conforming use process from it. We had that in there for a little while. It was a, it was a, again, a, we had a mechanism, a whole other section in here that we, that would provide for non-conforming uses, provide for that, where people could qualify and all that. We got rid of that. So there is no, there are no non-conforming uses contemplated in this.
Is it that non-conforming to a single-family residential?
We're stating that those are conforming.
Those particular, those particular, only because they were told that they, they could do that. Just those, those particular landowners.
Okay.
Now, get back. I want to call for a vote. Let's get this thing moving one way or another.
Well, yeah, that's nature, that's natural.
They're not going to answer it. They already said that.
I want to rescind that.
Wait a minute. He may answer for her.
Okay, he may answer.
He didn't hear you.
This covers us. I'm fine with it. The only thing I could see, I made a lot of friends out here. There are people that live around me. How this 14-day rule, how's this going to affect people that live in these? They got their mothers that live there. How's it going to affect them the 14 days?
Well, you're never...
Turn the mic.
Nobody's counting the 14 days.
Right. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect, that's what, I, I'm working out. I have to work for a living. I, I'm not down here 14 days, but you're not going to...
She would.
But I'm, but I'm just asking, if I've made friends out here, and I've got friends that live in their trailers right around me, and been there since I've been there, live in there, all around me, I can go rock and hit four or five of them. How's that going to, is that going to affect them? Because they've asked me this question. They should be here a couple of months. But they've asked me that question.
You've had her a whole life. Anybody that's lived...
I could get four or five.
That's from Carabelle, but he just went...
You never done nothing about it, but it's happening, is what we're saying.
I mean, I just think that...
And he's talking, and he's not talking about people who, that I, he's talking about people from Carabelle.
It is just a question. What we got here, I think it's a compromise. I'm, I'm fine with it. I think Arthur, I think he's fine with it. I think everybody else is. I, I just can't ask that question. It does worry me, that I made some friends out here. I hate to see them, I understand. I hate seeing Arthur.
And I'm going to say that...
All right, great. What do you say, Olivia?
We, we have a vote. We have to vote. You can't rescind it because it's already second.
Okay.
We have to vote. I'll, can I, Paul, or does one of you...
Mr. Madison can't rescind his second?
You can rescind his second? Is that...
Excuse me, please. Now, that was, that's, well, it's maybe someone speaking inside.
Even though you seconded, you can vote no.
What, what are we doing?
We're voting.
Going for a vote. Keisha, call roll.
Mr. Pudel?
What?
Mr. Pudel, how do you vote?
Listen, I've been sitting here listening. Ever since y'all started talking about this a long time ago, that man that lived right across the road from me, he bought two lots. He put a nice, neat camper on it, which I don't have a problem with. He moved up the water and sewer. He's got all his utilities. The man spends a lot of money down here. He comes every Friday. He fishes Saturday and Sunday. And he spends money in the restaurants. He spends money on the IGA. And the man pays taxes on his two lots. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's good to come.
No, no. No, no.
He will be protected after this, this right here. And he doesn't live there. He just comes to visit, uh, three or four days, and they're around him right. And I know what you're talking about, it's very nice that...
And he also got a lady to clean it up.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here and stop this conversation.
And Alandia?
Well, so you support that?
No.
Brenda? Mayor?
No.
Mr. Madison?
No.
Okay, I should stand, and the first reading has been done. We can all get into business.
Okay. You got it, Kelly.
You do all right.
Okay, I understand this. This is definitely a black and red drawing, and we're going to marry it.
Okay, uh, on this item, we, our due plans, uh, some of the applicant. Um, our recommendation is approval with conditions. There's, there are four conditions. One is that they provide a flushing pattern at the, at the dead end of the sewage water main. It's a very, very minor issue. Second is that they reference the C of Carabelle standards. Third, uh, there's a checklist, it's, uh, which includes standard notes that need to be provided on the plan, uh, specific, uh, to Carabelle. And, uh, fourth, that they provide a written statement from AirMac, which is now known as Billfinger, that capacity is available, uh, on the proposed vacuum system. Um, I understand in discussion with the applicant that, um, uh, Billfinger AirMac has indicated that capacity is available, that it would connect to a, a six-inch vacuum line. So those are our four, uh, conditions of the, the applicant's here with any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one. I would just, I just want to make sure that they do have capacity before they're built out. That's, do you have that in mind?
Yeah, that's why we asked, that's why it comes to...
I just want to make sure you have the capacity before you build that.
Yes, we have. I have, like Keisha, I have correspondence with Billfinger. There's names that's in the books. And, um, I'll provide much of the proof and everything as well.
Or to be...
Turn the mic.
Turn the mic on.
Push it forward.
I'm sorry. Any other questions? Wasn't quite as long as the wording, it's a problem.
If they didn't understand you, I think they want you to speak again.
Mr. Mayor, just repeat all the, uh, capacity, reservation of capacity.
Okay.
Hold it. I have a motion. A motion for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
All right, you can sit down.
I oppose. Motion carried.
And basically, they're just going to go on until they prove that they got capacity.
Approved, disapproved beer and wine license for the water, water age pizza at QO8 in St. James.
How approved for beer and wine license for water age? I'll make a motion for the approved. Second, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in total?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Given this approval, we're hiring you full-time police officer.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Craig Kincaid. I'm your chief of police. I bring this matter before you, realizing that we're two meetings away from a general election, and that we'll have a new mayor and a new commission. I've got a part-time officer right now that's working full-time hours, Officer John D'Ambrosio. He's on the street right now. I've asked him to come in. We hired him as a part-time officer on October 23rd, 2014. Comes from New Jersey, has a bachelor of science degree from the University of Scranton. He graduated from the Camden County Police Academy in New Jersey. It was a 900-hour academy. He spent two years as a Pine Valley Borough Police Department officer from 2004 to 2006. He spent three years as a City of Camden, New Jersey, police officer from 2006 to 2009. He's lived in Florida since 2011. He went through the Florida Out of State Officer Certification Course at Chipola College and passed. He's lived in Carabelle since June of 2012. What we're facing here is a staffing problem, I'm afraid. No matter who's the mayor or who gets elected to the commission shortly after I leave and after they take power, you're going to possibly be looking at appointing a new, not only a new police chief, but possibly two full-time openings. If you want to defer on this today, I understand, but we will have to come back and look at it very quickly after the election. I would like to hire full-time officers from part-time ranks whenever possible. That way we know what we're getting. However, I don't want to, I don't want that as a hard, fast rule, because if somebody that's lived here their whole life graduates from the police academy and wants to remain here, I want to hire them right out of the academy. A lot of times when we hire young people from the academy, and my former chief of police is sitting right here, if we got two years out of them, we were lucky. Stephen Simmons is a perfect example. Excellent candidate. We got two years out of him. He moved on to La Cola County Sheriff's Department, and from there he moved on to Leon County Sheriff's Department. I've got one part-time officer right now. I'm losing him next week to Leon County Sheriff's Department. And when I talk to the Leon County Sheriff's detectives doing background investigations, they tell me their agency is having a hard time getting people. I know the prison has got all kinds of vacancies.
Yes, we do.
And I, and I think this trend is going to continue in law enforcement, the way things are going in this country. What I don't want is I don't want us to be short-staffed after I, I leave on September 30th. So at this point, I'm going to propose that at least we make a decision either tonight to put them on full-time, or at least defer it, and then we'll revisit it after the new mayor, new commission come into power.
I, I do have one, uh, question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, this is for public record. This is for public records. Did your current budget allow for that stat, that extra stat?
Yes, we are down one full-time officer right now, and we have not filled that vacancy since April. We have been working him part-time. Because of all the hours, we've had to work him full-time. I've been coming in and I've been working some nights to try to cover it. David Kennedy was working, trying to take some of the flex time off that Deputy Chief Honeys had earned. But we're losing him to Leon County next week. And it's just, all officers are gonna go to federal agencies, bigger agencies with more advancement capabilities. You know, we're kinda limited here in Carabelle.
When did he start part-time?
We hired him several months ago, David Kennedy.
So he's already working?
Yeah, he's been working, you know, every week. He's been taking some of the flex time off at Gary's. But he's moving on to Leon County. He came from Franklin, moved over with us, but he's moving on to Leon. And he told us, he said, "It's better opportunities there, I can't blame him."
I'm gonna stop you.
Yes.
I'm gonna call for a vote, or a call for a motion, or whatever the pleasure of the board.
I'll make the motion, I have it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Presentation of award by Chief Kincaid. He did very well.
I'll keep this short. I am quality over quantity, I don't like quotas. But we entered the Florida Department of Transportation E U I challenge with the Law Enforcement Liaison Program. In two thousand fourteen, we came in second in the whole state of Florida for an agency our size category one, which is one to eight officers. As a result of taking second place, we got to pick twelve thousand dollars worth of equipment, and you see a sample of it right there, which cost nothing to the City of Carabelle.
All right, under old business, discussing the possible right to return the beach lease. That... I guess the beach lease...
Well, after I talked with D E today, I think the city needs to keep it.
Well, I was thinking the same thing. I think it's more of a sad conversation.
I mean, we probably gonna get some slack from the... Someone that wants to drive down on the Flatland Road or whatever, we saw it that way.
I understand.
But she did be assured, I think you met with him after I did, didn't you? And Mr. Bevan. And the thing about it is, if the city gives that back, it's beautiful down there. I mean, the old beach is beautiful. You can actually take your dog down there and all, and not have to worry about it. The thing about it is, nobody wants that lease. The county don't want that lease, they will not take it. Parks and Rec, they don't want it. The state don't want it. F W C don't want it. If we don't keep that lease, that beach is gonna be closed up.
Wait a minute, it's not gonna be closed off if we don't take the lease.
Okay. She basically told me that today, if we did not take...
Who's she?
The lady with D E C. Do you have her name, or the...
I have her.
She said if the City of Carabelle didn't take that lease, they didn't have... Nobody wants that lease.
The beach should be, the beach leased wherever it is.
It's gonna be.
Oh, it's not. You're saying it's gonna be... There's a place.
Ma'am, Bevan said that it could be sold if nobody wants it.
If we don't... No one's gonna buy it, except the City of Carabelle.
We've already got it, we've got the lease.
Then why worry?
We were just discussing our... Go ahead, Keith.
Now, I could ask the... I asked the lady, Mrs. Mary Ann Yikenbaum, today. If we just did not... If we gave the lease back, and no one else wants it, the Department of Parks, 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 Rec, and System does not want it, just like Commissioner Matthews said, F W C doesn't want it, Forest Reserve doesn't want it, Adher doesn't want it, the county does not want it at all, and no one wants to manage it. If the City of Carabelle decides that they do not want to manage it, they said that they would put barricades up there, and it might be closed off, or it may not be closed off. But that land belongs to the state, they brought maps.
I think it's forty-two acres.
Forty-two or forty-three acres. And they brought... They really found part of this today. They should've... We should've met with them earlier than, you know, because they handed all of this to... For us to study in a matter of an hour. But they did bring maps. They have proof that this belongs to the state. This land belongs to the state, and so the state can do what they want to with it. You know, if we don't want it...
They also went ahead and said that they would help us get grants if we wanted to put in the...
They said the city should not have to spend any money on this. That, I mean, there's grants. The lady told me, Marion. There's so many grants out there to have that... I mean, it's a shame that something, we haven't already done something with it. But we did not... I didn't know there was as many grants as she was saying out there. I mean, like Ball Point, I haven't been down there in ye... Twenty-something years. But she was saying, every bit of that down there at Ball Point. I mean, they got handicap access down there. And everything, but everything was done by a grant. And she said, "There's grants there for park, we can pave some parking, you know, up away from the dunes." You can make a little access road all the way to the point if you want.
No!
Not for vehicles. Not for vehicles.
Now, she...
But like for wheelchairs, something like this Camber's guy. But disabilities act, they have a grant. And she said, "It's at Ball Point, I haven't seen it, but it's like hard." It's hard stuff.
I would say, we called that a moby... It's a map that you put down, or wide enough, and she said that we could make a pathway, a walking mobile pathway.
As long as it doesn't be a pathway. It's a beach, you walk on the beach, you make your path. It's a wonderful beach. Everybody who uses it goes there every day, not like you. They walk on the beach and they love it. They do not walk on the dunes, and they stop driving on the dunes.
We don't want them driving on the dunes.
Well, we're not driving on the dunes, I'm just saying, leave the damn beach alone.
I am done.
No, you're not. You're saying we gotta...
But there's grants.
It ruins it. There's a grant to improve.
Hey, where can you get this under control?
But we can leave it alone too. But I don't want to give it back to the state where they possibly...
Did you hear me? No, I did not. Did you hear me now?
No.
What's wrong with you? Ain't got it on.
Speak up.
What's up? Hey.
I can hear that.
Can you hear that?
I can hear that.
All right. Mucistic properties, and gave that piece of property to the state about thirty years ago. And they did it because they wanted it for public use. We were doing an exchange with the state on Timber Island to get it in public ownership to the city. To the state, city leased it. The argument about the beach came up about, like, six months ago, when people that live out there along the beach...
Years ago.
...separate houses. Wanted to stop anybody else from using it, that was the... That was the intent.
That's not right.
And if that's what you want to do...
That's wrong?
That's not...
That's absolutely wrong, you're incorrect.
Well, were you here?
I live out there.
I know you did.
And we don't want to stop it from using it, you're wrong. You're absolutely incorrect.
It's always been a public...
It's always been a public...
I'm not gonna argue with you, but there's signs up out there saying, "Don't use this road, it's a private road."
No, 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 no.
It belongs to the state, it belongs to the county. Anyway, we gave y'all... We gave the state the land, okay?
And in nineteen eighty-five, November eighteenth, nineteen eighty-five, forty-two point five six eight.
That's right, and I signed it, so I know what I'm talking about. And it was for public use. And we let a lot of people use, or Ben has, I have, I've been watching, let people use his road to get down to the point, to butt and fish, or whatever they wanted to do. I made this statement once before. I caught tails when we sold that land out there around Little Lake Mucistic, 'cause that was prime breed to go out and put in Carabelle. And I'm a beach party. But we intended it to be for the use. I don't know if you let the state have it back, they can declare it surface. Our governor liked surface property sold, so that could very well happen. Now, there are restrictions that Judge Willis wrote on years ago as to what you could do with it. But for the time being, y'all need to keep it. You need to get some grant money. You need to build some parking areas out there, so you don't insult these people that live there. And you need to build some bathrooms.
You mean what? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Bathrooms.
No, you don't.
Sure you do. Where the hell people don't go to the bathroom?
Okay, now, I asked her some questions specifically. I did. And I asked her about... There was a suggestion at the last meeting to go to Live Rock Road, you know, on the back access road. She said, "No." And I...
They don't want any impervious services.
And then I asked her about allowing vehicle access along the road behind the sand dunes, and she said, "No, and that's state lands, and they don't want to..." But if we give it back to the state, then they're gonna cut... They will cut off all access. I said, "Well, what about at the end of Gulf Beach Road? Are you going to cut... Are you going to require us to cut that off from public access at the end of Gulf Beach Road here?" And she says, "No." She will not require us to cut that off to public access. In fact, she suggested small verdat grants here and here on state lands with some gravel or oyster shell for now, for parking. If we... But not... And she understands that the city is over budget. We were over budget last year, we may be over budget in this coming year. And she understands that the city cannot afford to finance that. And for now, she... If we can come up with a grant, I said, it may be two or three years before we can qualify her for that grant. We just got two. And then we can take that and put down gravel, or if someone wants to donate gravel, we can make, you know, some parking places right there.
I'm gonna interrupt you here. We probably will have to do some sort of workshop to clarify all this stuff we've gone through.
Well, we got ten years to do it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have a management plan and all that.
And I think this Camber's already started on one of them, because she's still... You should even put a boat ramp there, she said.
What I'm saying is... I'm gonna ask them to move.
I plead for the... I make a motion for the city to keep the property, keep the lease.
I have a motion.
Okay.
I have a second.
And discussion. Now, as we've said before, if it begins to where it looks like it's costing the city money that we don't have, I can bring this back again, or whoever is on the board in the future.
I don't see why you could not bring it up again.
And Mr. Harpik, what do you say?
I agree. You've actually redone that. When it comes up for the commission, Mrs. O...
I have a question, and I was told by the company.
You can make that decision.
This second. Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Okay.
All right, go ahead. State your name.
Sue Aitken.
Okay. What do you have to say?
My question is, I don't understand why there's money needed.
We weren't talking... We were... All we were worried about today was... And I'm not saying that we can leave the beach the way it is right now.
Right.
I don't care, you know, about that part. But the part we were worried about, if we give this lease back to the state, they could possibly barricade it out, and no one would be able to use that beach.
They're not gonna do that.
I didn't think so either, but that's what she said.
I know that...
And I don't want that to happen.
No, I don't either. But I also don't think it's a big deal, because it's been working beautifully. Since the environmental people put up the signs, I could drive.
It's fine, it has been, I agree with you.
And I don't know why there's money needed, because it's there, we don't need to put gravel down.
Well, they demand a management plan.
What?
They... The state demands a management plan under the lease. We have to have a management plan.
Okay. Well, we already have a guide down there who's called the master of the beach.
That's unfortunate.
Anyway, it's a good decision.
We're trying to protect your right to walk on the beach.
What?
We're trying to protect your right to walk on the beach.
You don't protect my right, I have the right.
Ma'am. We have a motion and a second.
May I say something?
Call for a vote?
Oh, yeah. May I say something? I think the city keep the lease, and what we can do is... Can't hear you. Is the vice president. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think if the city does keep the... Suri, and I do live at the beach, if they keep the lease, that beach could be something beautiful with the grants you're talking about, okay? And everyone can enjoy it. It's not that long?
No.
No, not that long, promised?
Well, we're right in with this. Take the move.
I make a motion.
Where's your vote, babe?
It's been safe.
The beach is already beautiful.
Okay. We're calling for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
You all know, I've talked to y'all before, we've discussed this, I'm gonna try to go through this right quick, please. November sixth, twenty-fourteen, we discussed it, and we decided, we all voted, we decided that we're going to search for locations to... For City Hall. We reviewed property along Highway ninety-eight at Northwest Fifth Street, across from Centennial Bank. We reviewed property along Highway ninety-eight at Northwest Sixth Street. The Two Gold property, we reviewed the Anchor Realty Building on Highway ninety-eight. We reviewed in depth the Head Start Building. We discussed that, had a special workshop on that. We decided we want the Head Start Building for the asking price, and coughed it up, and we bring it up to code ADA, that it wouldn't be worth it. Let's see now, what else have we... Okay, the Head Start, then I brought to you on March the fifth, the U Shape Mall, brought to us by Seacrest at the corner of Seventh Street and Highway ninety-eight. It's called Shanghai, ten thousand square feet, too much glass, not enough security, too much to redo. We didn't like that one. And then we reviewed eight vacant lots at the corner of Highway ninety-eight, Twelfth Street, across the street from Old Brenda's Restaurant, and a rock and berry survey was brought in, the site elevation, and we made no decision on that. I have one to bring for you right now, to take a look at. The metal building here that's on Highway ninety-eight, again, next to the Shanghai. It sits back, I've discussed this with staff. They all like it. It would repurpose that building. It's on the property appraiser's site, it's five thousand two hundred square feet. It's advertised as six thousand square feet. Fair market value, property appraiser, a hundred and nine. Don't know the lot size, but I didn't contact the agent just yet, because we need approval from the board, and it's... There would be plenty of parking for us, we have to build a parking lot. I understand it has no insulation, doesn't look like it has heat in there on the property appraiser's site, probably no insulation, plum for one bath. So it could be built out however we need it, however the city desires. Plenty of room for a police department, plenty of room for a nice meeting room. So that's what I have to say on that, here's where it's located. All right, I'll try to make that quick.
Very good. Appreciate it.
I make a motion for, I make a motion for us to check on this one for the City Hall. I mean, it ain't gonna hurt, I mean, we paying lots of money to stay here right now, lots of money.
We spent all last week with no air conditioning.
And the air conditioning's not cheap, we get it fixed.
We can take a look at it. I think you need to get, I need to get something to look at it.
Well, we can, we'll make a motion that, you know...
What we need to do is to have the city administrator contact the agent, see, that's the, that's the listing on the website, see what they're asking, have a tour of it, see if it does suit your needs, if any of the commissioners want to go and take a look, and then after that, Mr. Baden, we proceed with appraisal or...
One thing, and this is not super cutting, I am not the attorney for the estate, I haven't been for about a year, that is property owned by, I believe it's still owned by the estate of Pat Kinder, Steve Watkins is handling that estate, but I was the attorney handling the estate, I feel about a year ago.
You know which property I'm talking about?
I do, it's a steel building that's right there on...
It used to be though, Lee Market.
Yeah, Marshall.
People, Marshall, yeah, my uncle's used to buy it.
Yeah, Bill May built it.
Just wanted to throw that out there so you know, my name pops up.
Okay, so I'll, I'll motion for the city administrator to go ahead and contact the...
We have a motion, maybe?
Oh, excuse me. No motion? Olivia, I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Do I have any to bring to vote?
Oh.
All in favor?
Yes, yes.
All opposed? Motion carried. Carry it anyway. Now, as a discussion on that piece of property, the price level is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it probably means if you're gonna even consider that, you're gonna have to have some sort of, how much it would cost to repair it. Now, the other question is, you can build a steel building that fits your needs, pretty cheap too.
And right, the church there had a big thing going with the previous owner, when he dug in there and the church is trying to fall, and he put bags up there to hold the church up, so who's gonna take over that problem?
That would have to be something that would be researched, certainly, and it might, you might be able to negotiate.
I just wanted to bring that up. Any business?
I make a motion to approve of...
And I'll second that, jump high there.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Everybody go on now. I decided that...